And members of the board who are not physically present in the boardroom are participating via video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication. All items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. And if you have any questions about these suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787, or by emailing toma@oag.texas.gov. At this time, the board is going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code, Section 551, 71, 72, and 74, to consult with the board's attorney, discuss real property and personnel. We hope to reconvene in open session shortly, so that our guests do not have to wait an reasonable amount of time. So at this time, the board will retire into closed session and return soon as possible. Thank you. Okay. The board is back from closed session where no action was taken. And the next item on our agenda is public comments, but I understand from Mr. Richard that there were none. Correct? Okay. So next on our agenda is special recognitions, which are special, but I want to move things around a little bit unless anybody has an objection, and recognize Coach Love to greet our special guest tonight. Coach Love.
(laughter) Good. Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Ken Cannon, it's on. On. Good. Can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me? Okay. Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Ken Cannon, thank you so much for this opportunity. I am very, very, very happy, very excited. I guess you probably can't see my face, but hopefully you can read my eyes. Okay? Very happy to announce our two new head coaches and athletic coordinators at Waco High School and University. And I'm so excited. Again, the first one will be from Waco High. His name is Lyndon Hilt, and he's coming to us from South Grand Prairie. He's going to come up and say a few words with his family. And then we're going to have Kent Lester. He's coming to us from Little Rock. And very excited to have both of these young men. These guys, y'all just get ready. I'm not going to say anything other than just get ready, because we're getting ready to shake some things up and turn some things around. And I can't tell you how excited I am about it. I guess you can figure that out by now. So first, we'll have Waco High come up first, say a few words, tell us about himself a little bit, and have his family.
(inaudible)
Waco High cap, so everybody knows where he's from.
Yeah. Good luck with recruiting ceremony. Good luck. Good luck. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. We are excited beyond belief. We feel very blessed to be able to come up here and make our family part of the community. That is huge for us, and be part of something that we think can be really, really special. So we are decked out in regalia, ready to go. We came from red. We stayed red, so it felt right. And so jerseys and all, we love football, and can't wait to work with Mr. Stewart and Coach Love and Dr. Ken Cannon and the board to really improve Waco Athletics as well as Waco ISD. So thank you very much. This is my wife, Julianne, all right? Very, very important. It would have been a bad hiring ceremony, right? If it wasn't for that. This is my daughter Peyton, my son Brooks, and that's Ainsley over there with all the energy. Anyways, we appreciate y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
(applause) Yeah, that's right. Like, oh, man, somebody better have to be gone with you.
You leave there, I'll get it. I gotta leave. (laughter)
Okay. Next, we have Coach Lester for University High School. Congratulations, good coach. All right. Good evening, Board Members, Madam President, Dr. Ken Cannon, everyone that's here. Thank you all. We feel very blessed, my family and I, that you can see here. I wanted to back up so that they could see, be seen in the camera here. I want to thank my family, first off, because of the support that I get at home to be able to come here, coming from Little Rock. We were in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, then we've been in Little Rock, and now we are blessed to be a part of the Waco community. My wife, my head coach, is Amberly Lester. My oldest is Kennedy Lester. She's 10. And then Kinsley right here, she's six years old. And again, I want to thank my family. The second group I want to thank is the leadership of Waco ISD. Start with Dr. Ken Cannon, Mr. Love, and Dr. Edison for bringing me on as the head coach at University High School. I'm truly blessed, I'm honored, to be a part of that program, lead that program, and to work with great staff, great coaches, and great students. And we are extremely excited, and we want to teach young people to continue to be great in the classroom, be great in athletics, but also be great 10, 20, 30 years from now. Because at the end of the day, we want to build great people of character. And we are so excited to be a part of this Waco ISD community. I'm glad to be joining Coach Held as well. We'll start at the same time, and we want to make this ISD, Waco ISD, the best that it could be. Thank you.
(applause) I want to thank Coach Love for the process. He did a fantastic job, very professional. We had a good number of candidates, and we interviewed a lot of people. So you guys rose to the top, and we're really proud to have you in Waco ISD. We're also really proud to have these two wives here. And I want to mention that because they're both educators, and they're both administrative, high-level educators who are doing great things. Julianne works in the homeless at-risk department in Arlington ISD, and Amberly works in English ESL programs and has a principal certification, I believe. So we feel really blessed to not only have two really great coaches, but we think we have two really great wives who will contribute to Waco ISD as well. So we're going to look for ways to plug them in. But welcome and thanks again, Coach Love. Appreciate you. (applause)
Well, thanks again for coming and bringing your families. You know, we're kind of starved for in-person. We used to, usually we'd have students and other community folks come to our meetings and recognize them. So it's been a while since we actually had some guests. So we're really excited to have y'all. But it's okay if you want to leave. More than okay, y'all have been very patient with us, and we're just really excited to have you. So, thanks.
And you feel free to leave if you need to.
Oh, yes, please. Oh, yes.
We know your children are probably tired of sitting.
Yeah.
So do what you need to do.
Okay. So now I'll move back up in the agenda to our special recognitions. It's Mr. Richard. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Board. Dr. Ken Cannon, congratulations to our two new coaches, making their way out this evening. Don't blame them having little ones get home. Not that I'm not excited about this next set of recognitions, of course. Not to diminish. So we're going to start this evening with the Waco ISD Police Department welcoming their newest recruit, Officer Dedrick Garner Jr. to his very first law enforcement appointment. No? Well, this picture will be up in just a second. But Garner attended Lamar University, where he played football, and earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He completed an internship with the Free Stone County District Attorney's Office, there he is, and attended the Hill College Police Academy Program. Following graduation from the academy, he accepted and began his first law enforcement appointment with the Waco ISD Police Department in December 2020. Congratulations to Officer Garner. The Waco ISD Human Resources Department launched an Employee of the Month program back in the spring of 2020, inviting staff from around the district to nominate professional and paraprofessional support staff for their hard work and dedication. It was a brief hiatus. The program was restarted this past fall with an impressive number of nominations received, as we've told you about, over, well over 100 in just two months, due to the continued high number of submissions, again, for employees. Two professional staff members, two members of our paraprofessional support staff were surprised with the announcement that they had been selected as Waco ISD's Waco Employee of the Month for the month of December. First, we'd like to celebrate our paraprofessional support employees. There we have Derek Payne, our mail delivery clerk for the entire district. He's a 33-year veteran of Waco ISD, selected because he, quote, "provides service above and beyond." I can attest to that as well. His daily routes across the district, his nomination form noted he was, he has, "an unparalleled ability to form positive relationships and always has kind words." Although many know or recognize him and his duties are truly essential, it may still be considered a behind-the-scenes position, making sure mail and packages get to and from campuses, offices, and the post office, no matter the challenge. His nominator would have selected him as employee of the decade, if possible. And there is Sylvia Wilson, a special education inclusion aide at West Avenue Elementary School, selected because of her dedication to the teachers and students that she supports. Sylvia is an Army veteran, worked with Waco ISD now for nearly 20 years, across all grade levels, primarily working with students with special needs. She arrives smiling every day and can even be heard laughing all the way down the hallway. She shows patience and works to help her students have a positive day. When quarantine affected the campus this year, she stepped up to the plate to ensure students' IEPs were followed and supported them and the classroom teachers in a variety of ways. Now, we'd like to celebrate our Professional Employees of the Month, starting off with Haley Dean, Assistant Principal at Lake Air Montessori Magnet School. She was selected because she is, quote, "beyond amazing." Her nominator noted she always finds time to listen to a teacher in need, check on a student, and mentor others. Haley has been with Waco ISD for nearly 20 years and continues to set the bar high for everyone she interacts with. She always puts students first and goes out of her way to help any student. Congratulations to Ms. Dean. And David Guthrie, a 7th-grade English Language Arts teacher at GW Carver Middle School, is in his fourth year with Waco ISD. His nomination described him as "a patient and positive force on the campus who works hard every day, ensuring his students have the necessary tools and resources to be successful. He is a team player, confident in his content, calm, always listening, and puts everything he has into making his students' lives a little brighter." Congratulations to David and Haley, our Professional Employees of the Month. Yes. (applause) And of course, we look forward to the day when they can be here in person in front of the board. Okay, moving on to our community partner for this month. Waco ISD's theme for this school year is "Empower All, Value All." It's a theme that reflects the district's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals, and individuals. Waco ISD recognizes that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow, and succeed is strengthened. Of course, the district recognizes that no individual organization can thrive and accomplish their goals or mission alone. Instead, we are at our best when families, employees, and the community join together to realize shared hopes and dreams, and empower and value our students, staff, and support their future. We're blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in our district's students, staff, and their success. Each month, we proudly recognize a community partner making a difference with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. And this month in January, the district is recognizing two groups, the Cooper Foundation and Waco Foundation jointly. In January, we decided to do two. Two's better than one. So in October 2020, Waco ISD trustees approved a resolution. To be silent is to be complicit, taking a strong stand against racism and committing to work toward equity transformation at all levels. Noting the national crisis of racism, the board and superintendent committed to be anti-racist and to speak against, confront, and take action when they see or learn of intolerance and justice or prejudice. The Cooper and Waco Foundations, both members of the 2019-2020 Community Foundation Equity Network, have worked together to advance equity throughout our community. Their partnership brought five half-day groundwater trainings and six two-day race equity trainings facilitated by the Racial Equity Institute to the greater Waco community, including district and campus leaders right here from Waco ISD. Both trainings are designed to help community members have constructive conversations about race and race equity, advancing a deeper community understanding of the role race plays in determining quality of life challenges faced by local residents. The REI organizers use national, state, and local data to present a perspective that structural race inequities continue to influence education, health, justice, and various systems. Here we have Cooper Foundation Executive Director Felicia Chase Goodman. We thank her, as well as the Cooper Foundation for their community partnership. And Waco Foundation, sorry, go back one. There we go. Waco Foundation Executive Director Ashley Allison, there we go, and Senior Director of Community Investments and Operations Nicole Winter, accepting the award virtually. Congratulations to Cooper Foundation and Waco Foundation for being Waco ISD's January Community Partner. (applause) Yes, congratulations to this month's honorees. And we're not done, though. Certainly don't think we forgot. Each year, the Texas Association of School Boards encourages districts to celebrate School Board Recognition Month during the month of January. Our school board members are volunteers who share a passion for not just public education, but more specifically, public education at Waco ISD. These seven individuals have a common goal of consistently focusing on the current and future success of our students, staff, and district as a whole. They represent our community and serve as a link between it and the classroom. The theme for this school year's School Board Recognition Month, "Navigating to Success," is fitting for the work that these individuals do, especially in this past year, as our district faces a global pandemic, reimagined education overnight, continuously working to provide for our staff and students. It's without a doubt that our board has indeed had to steer through uncharted waters this year, and we're extremely grateful for their leadership as they navigated the district towards success and continue to. This evening, we'd like to take a moment to recognize each of our trustees individually. We recognize that literacy and access to quality books are key ways to ensure our students find success and continue to grow in their education. Again, this year, in honor of each trustee, we have selected a children's book that will be given to each of our 15 elementary libraries to commemorate this School Board Recognition Month and honor each of you for your service to our district. The titles have been selected by one of our elementary librarians, and they focus on stories that share our district theme to empower all and value all. In addition, we're pleased to present each trustee with a canvas showcasing this year's theme as well. It's artwork concept designed by Waco High art teacher Hope Garrity, whose beautiful mural is behind you as well. In preparing for this evening, we asked individuals from across the district to share with us how each of you have worked for and made an impact for students, their campus, their department, the district. We're pleased to share just a sampling of their words and appreciation. Mr. Vedanya, there you are. You've said one of your top goals has been to continue building meaningful relationships and connections with Waco ISD students and families. Responses we received affirmed that, such as this one, which says, "Mr. Vedanya visits and supports our campus and is often at parent-involved midnights and sporting events, engaging with the families in our community. I appreciate his support of not only our campus specifically, but the entire South Waco community." The children's book, "I Believe I Can," by Grace Byers and illustrated by Katara E. Bobo, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Vedanya's honor. "I Believe I Can" is an affirmation for boys and girls of every background to love and believe in themselves. It reminds readers that my presence matters in this world. I know I can do anything, if only I believe I can. Mr. Vedanya, thank you for dedicating your time and efforts to ensure the next generation believes in themselves and realizes their greatest potentials when they believe they can too. (applause) Yes, it is in the bag. We had to do it, of course, a little differently this year.
And there's a book plate inside of the book.
There is, yes. There is a book plate with name and, oh, there we go. Perfect. Loving it. Okay. Moving over to Robin Houston. As a Waco ISD parent, Waco High alumna and daughter of a Waco ISD teacher, Ms. Houston has a unique and much appreciated perspective. She has been a strong supporter of the fine arts, advanced academics, and history fair, which her son Oliver was a national qualifier for in individual performance last June. She knows in a very personal way just how much work and dedication it takes to be an effective teacher. The children's book, "I Promise" by LeBron James, yes, that LeBron James, and illustrated by Nina Mata, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Ms. Houston's honor. "I Promise" is a lively and inspiring story that follows a diverse group of children and encourages them to be resilient, respectful, imaginative, and above all, true to themselves. No matter who you are or where you're from, kindness and acceptance can lead to excellence. Mrs. Houston, thank you for your dedication. (applause) Virtually, this is interesting. You are an inviting individual with a sense of joy and a smile when visiting campuses and when visiting us virtually. You have a heart for our district and have always been such an encouragement, wanting to know how the community and board could support our schools. You have been consistently advocating for our teachers and their well-being, and we appreciate that. The children's book, "When Stars Are Scattered," by Victoria Jamison and Omar Mohammed, and illustrated by Iman Getty, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in your honor. The book tells the story of Omar, who was only four years old when he fled to a Kenyan refugee camp from war-torn Somalia with his little brother in tow. This remarkable true account of Omar's childhood tells of his growing up in the camp, raising his little brother, and dreaming of a better life for them both. Ms. Quarterway, thank you for working alongside staff and teachers to create a sense of family and home, just as Omar did for himself and his brother. And we hope you have your canvas, or should be getting it soon. Thank you for your service to our district. (applause) Okay. Mr. Dupree has always asked for real input. He wants to know what is needed and how the board can support our schools. He is a dedicated parent who actively attends campus events and is truly invested in our schools. Additionally, he's hilarious, makes me laugh, always lends a smile, a handshake or hug, and offers words of advice. And this is my bit, sports a dashing bandana. Not tonight. That's okay. That's okay.
Or mask.
Leave the viewers wanting more. The children's book, "New Kid," by Jerry Craft, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Dupree's honor. Winner of the Newberry Medal and Coretta Scott King Author Award, "New Kid" is an honest graphic novel about starting over at a new school where diversity is low and the struggle to fit in is real. Struggling with wishing he was in an art school and navigating a new school culture, the main character finds himself torn between two worlds and not really fitting in in either one. Mr. Dupree, thank you for working to build a school and district culture where all staff and students feel valued and empowered, especially those who may be new or don't feel like they fit in. Thank you. (applause) And into our virtual world again, Mr. Manning shows true dedication to the students in our district, and his personal visits to campuses demonstrate his commitment to learning more about the needs of our schools. He always greets you with open arms and makes you feel like you're highly supported by the board of trustees, and simply asks, "How are things going at your campus? And how are you doing?" The children's book, "I Talk Like a River" by Jordan Scott, illustrated by Sidney Smith, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Mr. Manning's honor. This powerful and uplifting story tells of a boy who stutters and feels isolated, alone, and incapable of communicating in the way he'd like, until a walk by the river and his compassionate father help him find his voice and reconnect with the world around him. Trustee Manning, because of your work as a board of trustee, our students are able to find their voice. We thank you for your dedication to help them find it, use it, and build confidence with themselves to connect to the world around them. Vice President Alan Sykes. Mr. Sykes has consistently been a friendly and supportive trustee, among other things. He has been a champion for sports by recognizing that one of the ways we develop well-rounded students and leaders is through extracurricular programs like our athletic program. He has ensured that in planning for the future of our facilities, that the athletics programs are included and not shortchanged. The children's book, "All Because You Matter" by Tammy Charles and illustrated by Brian Collier, will be given to each elementary library in Mr. Sykes' honor. The story is a beautiful love letter to Black and Brown children everywhere. It's a heartfelt and powerful story that reminds them how much they matter, that they have always mattered, and that they will always matter. Mr. Sykes, thank you for always supporting our teachers and students to build classrooms, schools, and a district that ensures each and every student is valued and appreciated. President Angela Teckel. Mrs. Teckel has been a strong and valuable supporter of many programs, including the Waco High Mock Trial Team. You're a tenacious advocate for what you believe is in the best interest of the district and have led the board and district through momentous transitions. You're receptive and open to feedback, and the way you listen to district employees is very meaningful. The children's book, "I Am Every Good Thing" by Derek Barnes, illustrated by Gordon C. James, will be given to each elementary library in your honor. Quote, "I am a nonstop ball of energy, powerful and full of light. I'm a go-getter, a difference-maker, a leader." That's the confident Black narrator of this book, who's proud of everything that makes him who he is. He's got big plans, and no doubt he'll see them through, as he's creative, adventurous, smart, funny, and a terrific friend. Mrs. Teckel, thank you for leading our board and recognizing that our staff and students are every good thing that make up this district, just like this book's protagonist, you're a go-getter, a difference-maker, and of course, a leader.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) And finally, while she's not expecting this, but we hope she will indulge us, we know that no team of eight can be complete without our superintendent, and we wanted to add just one more book to each library in Dr. Ken Cannon's honor as well. The children's book, "The World Needs Who You Were Made to Be," by Waco's own Joanna Gaines and illustrated by Juliana Swainy, will be given to each of our elementary libraries in Dr. Ken Cannon's honor. Based on your love of design thinking and its mindsets and essentialism, this seemed to be a perfect fit, as it looked at creativity and turning a challenge into art. Its inspirational message of acceptance and celebrating uniqueness lines up beautifully with our mission, our vision, to empower and value all. We thank you very much for your service as well. Now, a total of eight new titles will be given to each of our elementary libraries in honor of this group of hard-working individuals as a token of our appreciation for your role in Waco ISD. Hopefully, this brings a smile to your face. If you remember, this year, of course, this year is quite different than last year. Here's a photo from last year, a bit of a Throwback Thursday, to last January, when our students shared in the celebration. We could gather close together, share smiles and hugs, even though this year, though, it may look different, and we have to social distance, smile with our eyes, elbow tap, fist bump. Our appreciation for our board of trustees and Dr. Ken Cannon is the same. I was going to click over to the next slide, but I'll keep this one up. On behalf of the entire district, its staff, and students, thank you to each of you individually and collectively as a group for your tireless and often unrecognized work and and collectively as a group for your tireless and often unrecognized work and efforts for the students of our community. By advocating for resources, staffing, curriculum, systems, and so many other things, you provide a stronger framework for our schools, you encourage our leaders, teachers, and students, and without a doubt, you are navigating us to success. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. I just want to add a little to that. And that picture, wow, that seems like so long ago. We have come so far and have been through so much since that picture was taken last year. And I just want to thank each and every one of you for your service to Waco ISD as a board member. It has been a challenging year, and you guys have been so supportive and helpful to our team and as we've navigated this pandemic. So, thank you. You have a holder, I forgot what it's called, an easel, what's it called, an easel for your canvas, and that is our beautiful logo designed for the mission statement that you all approved this year for Waco ISD. It has a little nameplate on it, and we hope you enjoy that as well.
That's lovely. Thank you.
Can you see it, Stephanie?
Did you see the? Hold it in the camera.
I can't, I can't see. Oh, that's awesome.
Yours is on the way.
Yes, no, Laura dropped, Laura dropped it off.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, that will do it for this evening's recognitions. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks, Josh. Very kind.
Thank you.
Okay, Denise? Is she ready? Hi, Denise. Is this our public hearing?
Yes, for the taper, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so.
And that's a tough act to follow. We gave out all kinds of books, and I don't carry books like I'm carrying data.
So I think, so I think protocol is we temporarily close the meeting and open it up to the public for Ms. Bell to present the taper report, and anyone who has a question is free to ask. So, those are yours.
Okay, so this is the public hearing to share data on academic programs, staff, student, and teacher demographics, as well as statistics on our higher education opportunities for students. The data we're about to look at reflects the 2019-20 school year, unless otherwise noted. So, in the case of graduates and dropouts, there would be different years' data that we're looking at. The campus and district reports are linked on our site if you'd like to see them in more detail. So first, we are not rated. The district has a rating that is what was used for the entire state of Texas, which is a declared state of disaster. We also have a determination status on special education, needs substantial intervention. With this needs substantial intervention for special education, the label is a determination based on an evaluation of indicators in our special education program and for federally required elements. So you can see that we have the highest intervention rating and that there are multiple things that we can be working on. So I know that Ms. Davis has presented to you before about things we're doing in special education. The accountability ratings, all campuses along with the district were rated, not rated, declared state of disaster. Due to the pandemic, the 2020 spring and summer star administrations were canceled. Therefore, the performance section of the taper that you, if you look at it, will be the 2019 data. So they just took it from one year and used it again. And so if you looked at that data, you'd be looking at 2019's star data. So let's get into the statistics that they were able to update. The first is attendance rate from 2017-18 to 2018-19. You can see the attendance rate for the state remained the same at 95.4 as well for two years, and Waco ISD has gone from a 94.3 to a 94.5. Our dropout rate reflects keeping even, the .4. We've talked about dropout rates before, and the state's rating as well is on here. So from 17-18 to 18-19, we have statistics for the seventh and eighth graders, and then we have separate statistics for the ninth, 12th graders comparing the state to Waco ISD. On the flip side of dropout rates is the graduation rate. This reflects three years' worth of students because this data is longitudinal. So the class of 2016, all the way on the right, the six-year class, you can see had an 81.7 Waco ISD, and the state had a 92.4. The class of 2018, evaluated in its fifth year, Waco ISD had a 79.4, the state had a 92.2. And finally, the class of 2019 represents our current four-year graduation rate. Waco ISD had a 79.3, and the state had a 90. The next statistics are also attached to the high school. The Foundation High School program is the diploma, the name or title of the diploma that students receive. The highest level is the Foundation High School diploma with the distinguished level of achievement. So what's the difference between these two when you look at these statistics? The Foundation is the basic 22 credits for diploma as defined. Distinguished levels refer to the Foundation diploma, where the student earns 26 credits, one endorsement, and has taken Algebra II. Students can earn an endorsement but not be distinguished. So they put these statistics there for us. The class of 2018 for Waco ISD, you can see that 78% of our diplomas were Foundation-only, 22% were distinguished. For the state, the class of 2018, 82% were Foundation-only, 18, I'm sorry, it's flipped, 18% Foundation-only, 82, is the Foundation distinguished. Waco class of 2019, 30.3% are Foundation-only, 69.7 were distinguished. And then the state's class of 2019 has 16.5% Foundation-only, 83.5. Next, we'll go into the statistics for college, career, and military-ready graduates. You can see on the slide there the ways that students can show they are college-ready, career-ready, or military-ready. So right there on the slide, I put our statistics. For the class of 2017, we had a 54.8%. For the class of 1819, we had a 68.9%. And you can see those compared with the states. The state's 17-18 grads were 65.6, 18-19 grads were 72.9. Seeing this together, the 2019 grads who demonstrated preparedness for college, the workforce of the military, in one of 11 ways. So what this bar graph does is take the information from back here, the different categories, and puts it into the statistics, and you'll see the most common ways that Waco ISD earns ours are through dual-credit, TSI, and AP, and then over in the career military, CTE, coherent sequences, and armed forces. It's important to note, those two things there will no longer be CCMR indicators going forward in the future. Graduates and higher ed, so how are Waco ISD graduates doing in relationship to college enrollment and performance? Our 2017 grads, 52.5% of them moved on to higher education. The state rate was 54.6. Our 2018 graduates, we had a 52.2%, and the state had a 52.5. The 2017 graduates who completed one year without needing any developmental support or help in higher ed, 32.9 for us, 59.8 for the state. 2018 graduates who completed one year without needing any developmental support, 42.8, 60.7. So I put the increase there so you could see that, that it's a 9% increase on our part. Okay, profile of the school. This is our ethnic distribution of students. So 60.3 is our largest group, which is Hispanic. 28.5% is our white, and then the other portions are there as well.
Actually, you said that backwards.
Oh, did I?
Yes, 28.5% is African-American.
Is African-American. Thank you, ma'am. Looking at the little colors here, I'm trying to.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that. For student demographic information that's not based on ethnicity, there's the other pieces that we have. So students who receive disciplinary placements, we had a 3%. At-risk, 71.6%. 3% of our students are homeless, 4.8% are under dyslexia programs, 504 is 7.2, and economically disadvantaged is 90.6. So that was our rate for last year. For other programs specific to student needs, we have the EL and the special education information. So for English language learners, that is 20% of our student population overall, which matches the state, which is 20.3%. Bilingual ESL students, 19.6. So there are two categories of this particular area, and so that's why the numbers are a little bit different. Under special education, 9% of our student population is served by special education. The state's is 10.5. And underneath that, you can see the type of disabilities these students have based on their primary. So students can have, be in multiple areas, but this is categorized by their primary area. So we have intellectual disabilities is 39%, physical is 21%, autism is 10%, behavioral disability is 26%, and early childhood noncategorical, the different areas for the babies, literally the babies, the 2%. So let's look at the demographics of teachers. Our Waco ISD teacher turnover rate for 2018-19, so this is one year back, was 23%. The state's overall rate is 16%. So this kind of helps you understand some of the things we're working on to maintain teachers and keep them. Our teachers are 74% female, 25% male, 2% do not have a degree, 76% approximately have a bachelor's, 19% with a master's, and 1.9 with doctorates. 13% are African-American, 19% are Hispanic, and 64% are white. Okay, teacher experience as published in the taper. So this you'll see two slides for because on our taper, the beginning-year teacher statistics are off, and so are the other years. So you can see that if you look at that bottom, it makes it look like we had 63% of our teachers had zero experience, and that is not correct. So it wasn't just a matter of them transposing numbers. It's all of those numbers are not going to be completely accurate because of a software change that happened between our first PIM submission and our second. So we're pretty sure we understand what the problem is that caused the anomaly, but we caught it, and we're able to give you the real statistics for our teachers. So this is the teacher experience. For Waco ISD, 12% of our teachers have over 20 years, 19% have 11 to 20, 16% have 6 to 10 years, 38% have 1 to 5, and 12% have beginning. So it's not 63% having zero experience. That would look quite different as a district. So again, this was a change due to a software situation that we caught, so it should not be repeated, but we're looking into it to make sure we understand what happened and correct it in the future.
Yeah, we're still investigating it. We're also checking to see if we can correct the data with the state. It was accurate when we submitted it in October. It's accurate in the system now, but we believe when it was extracted, and there were some field changes made by our software system provider, that when we grabbed the data for the PIM's resubmission, that something happened then, although it's right in the system. So we can't fully explain it, but we are checking into it, and we'll see if we can get it corrected.
Corrected. Okay, and then finally, the higher ed report on Waco ISD. This just breaks down the number of graduates that have been found from Waco ISD in various locations. We had a total number of 900 grads, and you can see the breakdown, for example, from 236 students at MCC all the way to, down to the other public four-year institutions, and then not trackable, and then at the very bottom, the not found. So these are students who are nowhere within the clearinghouse for being in the education system, and that's our largest at 467. So this is the total of where these students went to, not necessarily were accepted to. These are the locations that they were at as of this year. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, thanks. So we'll close the public hearing at this time and reconvene the board meeting with the superintendent's report, item seven.
Sure. I have two quick items for you this evening. First, a COVID-19 update. Monday, we recorded our 500th COVID-19 case involving someone at a campus or other district facility since we started school on September 8th. So that's a significant number. Our Health Services Department continues to use the voluntary rapid testing to identify students' employees with the virus and to clear any quarantined employees to return to work sooner. During the last weekend of winter break, we administered 633 rapid tests at two drive-through testing sites and had 62 positive cases. Our rapid tests continue to be available on an as-needed basis at each campus, and drive-through testing is available from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday at Guaca, and that's been really significant. And I want to thank our head nurse, Rhian N. Settles, for her commitment to doing that every single day so that our employees can get tested, our families, our kids as needed. So we're thankful for the state for providing those tests, and for Rhian and her staff for managing that. I also want to mention that we're exploring ways to help our employees get access to vaccinations. I don't have anything to share tonight, but I hope to be able to announce something in the near future regarding that. The other item I had was to talk about our bad weather day. We are recommending this evening yet another calendar change for this school year. I don't remember ever having to change the calendar this many times, but as you know, we did close school on Monday, January 11th, for the beautiful snow event that we had on the Sunday before. We have additional instruction minutes in our calendar for this year, so we're recommending that our Waco ISD students not be required to make up school on February 15th, and that our employees will need to report, however, because we have 187-day calendar and we have contracts, and we'll ask that they fulfill that, those number of days, and would designate February 15th as a staff in-service slash planning day. And so you'll find that in your consent agenda this evening, but I wanted to mention that for the public's knowledge. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Let's see, consent agenda, we have items 9A through 9K. Is there any item that any member of the board wishes to remove for further discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I know we approved the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. I'll take that as a second, Mr. Sykes. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 I don't hear any opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is an item that we have been discussing quite a bit over the last several months, and that is the three-party interlocal cooperation agreement between the county, the city, and the school district related to the venue project, Dr. Kincanon.
Sure. We have discussed this. This is the final agreement, which has multiple property exchanges, and it provides for the district to receive funding from the county for the, to go towards the replacement of the Paul Tyson project, field replacement project. And I think we've talked about it plenty. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the agreement.
Okay. No. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Thank you, Mr. Dupree.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Is there any further discussion? I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the agreement as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Passes unanimously. I just want to thank you, Dr. Kincanon.
I, I just want to thank, um, you, Dr. Ken Cannon, and the team for working, um, on a project that has many moving parts. And we, um, appreciate the partnership with the county and the city, and I think together, we're gonna end up with a really great project. And, um, Paul Tyson Field, um, now we really have cleared the way to, um, to begin work. Last week, we chose our contractor and, um, with this agreement, the county will, um, will, has made arrangements to forward proceeds from our share, moving, uh, Paul Tyson over and, and, um, really, um, creating a better venue for our kids all around. Um, so that is exciting and, um...
Thank you. We're excited, and our coach is excited as well.
Yeah.
Coach, lovely, Coach Elster, very excited.
Very good, very good. Okay, next is the, um, audit report. And is, um... Ms. Young, virtual?
Yes.
I hear you. Yeah.
I'm here this evening.
Oh, there you are, hi, how are you?
Hi. Good evening, Madam President and Board. Glad to be here tonight to present the annual financial report. So I think we're gonna have it up on the screen, and then I'm gonna tell you the page number two as we go along, if that's okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with page 35, and, uh, this is Statement of Net Position, um, 35 of PDF. And, uh, the page in the audit report, the hard copy that you have is on page 31. So 35 PDF and 31 hard copy. And, um...
Can you share?
Is the, this is the Statement of Net Position. I'm sorry, sometime, um... Let me just wait a moment. Okay, sorry, now we have the Statement of Net Position up. And the key thing about this particular report that I always like to point out, and I know many of you have visited with this every year at the board meetings, is this report's only prepared once a year, and it consolidates all the funds, general fund, debt service, capital projects, and, uh, all those special revenue funds into one particular, uh, column we refer to as governmental activities, and it reports the net position of the net worth of the district. It brings in all the capital assets and long-term liabilities that are not in the fund financial statements. And I always like to point that out because when you look at this financial statement, you see at the bottom a deficit of 18 million. And you may say, well, I thought Cheryl said we were gonna spend up about 52 million in fund balance. Well, that's because fund balance doesn't include all the long-term liabilities. It's more about the economic resources of what you have available to appropriate. So, um, it reports a deficit, but as we've mentioned earlier, that deficit is primarily because of the pension and OPEB liability that's on that page. If you see the pension liability of 48 million and the OPEB, the post-retiree healthcare plan, of 58 million. So, you know, some people are, are people that are listening in on this. The district is making all their contractually required contributions, but this is just an actuarial report of what that long-term liability is and the future amounts that the state, uh, the district would have to, uh, contribute if, if everything was to end today. Um, you can see that the OPEB liability is a much larger number, and that's primarily because the state has designed that to be a pay-as-you-go program. So I just wanted to mention that those financial statements are just done once a year as a, as a part of the financial package to, uh, TEA. Uh, so I'm gonna flip on over to Exhibit C1, and it's on PDF page 37, and it's your hard copy 33. So the first column on page, uh, 33 of the hard copy is the, uh, the balance sheet of the governmental funds. And the first column is the general fund, which accounts for the general operations of the district. And you can see that you have 70 million in assets, which is primarily CAD. You had some liabilities of 17 million and deferred inflows of a million dollars. And those are those property taxes that you haven't collected yet that are unavailable. And that's just the methodology of accounting and governmental accounting of how you offset that receivable above because it's not available for appropriation. And then you come on down to a total fund balance of 52 million and the unassigned portion being 46 million. And you can see that, uh, the National School Breakfast and Lunch Fund, which is also a major fund, had 3.4 million in assets, and you had 342,000 in liabilities and a fund balance of 3 million that's restricted to that program. The next column is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Many of us refer to it ESER, and that's a, the program that, uh, TEA pushed out in about May and gave school districts the option to record that in, uh, they could either record it all or a portion of it in the 20-year and the 21-year because they were gonna reduce the, the district's state funding. And, uh, the ballot feed, the total assets on that date was 2.9 million, and, uh, that's money due back to the general fund because the general fund paid those expenditures, and they're gonna get reimbursed by the state. And so there is no fund balance because it's a reimbursement grant. The next column on that page is the Debt Service Fund, which accounts for the collection of property taxes for the payment of your general obligation bonds. And you can see that you had 4.2 million in assets, which was primarily your cash and your property taxes. Also, a small amount that's due back to other governments of 26,000, which is primarily the state. And then you see that deferred inflow of, uh, unavailable property taxes of 231,000 and a fund balance of 3,990,000. The next column is, again, all those non-major funds, sector Title I, uh, special ed, and all of those other particular state grants that aren't in the foundation program, totaled 5,651,000 in assets. And the primary items were the receivables from the government, which is primarily TEA, because those are reimbursement grants of 3.2 million. And then your liabilities of 4.9 million and a fund balance of 674,000. The next statement I want to go over is Exhibit C2, and that's on PDF page 39, and it's on your hard copy 35. This is a Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances. And the first column, again, the general fund, which took in 157 million. And you can see it's primarily local money, which that 70 million is primarily property taxes. And then your state money, 83 million, and a small amount of federal in the general fund. Your expenditures were 153 million, and you had an excess of 4 million before transfers out of 600, uh, net of some sale of personal properties, 613,000. So you overall increased your fund balance by 3,442,000. And that is primarily, not considering unassigned, just total fund balance, almost four months of fund balance, which is exceptional for the school district. Um, the next column is your School Breakfast and Lunch Fund, and you had 8.5 million in revenues, and you had 9.2 million in expenditures, and a decrease this year of 729,000. And we all know that the revenues didn't come out to what was expected, and you, some of those expenses are there whether you serve the meals or not. So, uh, you know, with COVID, that, that went down 729,000, which brought that fund balance from 3.8 million to 3 million even, to 3.052. The next one is that ESER grant. Uh, you took in recognized 2.6 million in revenues, and the expenditures are the same because it's a reimbursement grant. And then the next column is the Debt Service, which took in 15,479,000, which is primarily the property taxes and a little bit of state revenue that you get in the, uh, EDA and the debt allotment. And then your expenditures were 15,545,000, which reduced fund balance overall 66,000 of, from 4,057 to 3,990,000. The next column is the non-major funds, again, which you had total revenues of 21,725,000 and expenditures of 22,350,000 and a, uh, transfer in of 655,000. And that overall increased fund balance 31,000, which brought it from 642,000 to 674,000. The next schedule I'd like to go over is Exhibit D2, and it's on PDF page 42. And the hard copy page is page 38 in your report. So this is a Statement of Revenues, Expenses, and Changes in Net Position, and I like to just go over it because it's your health insurance and your workers' comp. And both of those programs are self-funded plans by the school district. And you took in 13 million in revenues and 12 million in expenditures and had an increase of a million two, and which brought that net position from 2.7 million to 3.9. And we know that claims expense dropped primarily is, is our belief that it dropped because people didn't go to the doctors, they postponed, uh, visits that they would have normally gone to because of the COVID environment. And so although the claims expense went down on health insurance this year, you know, next year, we would expect those to go back up. Following the, these particular exhibits are the notes to the financial that provide a lot of additional information. And most important note that I'd like to go over is the long-term liabilities. That's on PDF page 65. And the hard copy, uh, is page 61, so 65. This page right here in the middle gives you the total liabilities of the district, breaking out the summary of the bonds, uh, the lease revenue bonds were paid off this year. So the GO bonds, 141,440,000. Lease revenue bonds were paid off at 83120. And you have some premium that's gonna be amortized over the life of those bonds above. And then the accumulated accretion for those, uh, CAD bonds, those steep discount bonds, and recognizing the accretive interest on those of 186,000. So your, the total bonds payable were 158,000, and then adding your net pension liability and the OPEB liability of 48 million and 58 million respectively. On the following page, you're going to see another pay table at the PDF page 67. And the table at the top of page 67, I just want to let you know that I, on the previous page, is that PDF page 66, I'm sorry? Okay, the previous page was just that summary of the long-term debt with bonds and pension and interest. But this table breaks out all the various bond issues outstanding and what the balances of each of those various bond issues. So I just want you to know that that's in there. There's lots of information in the notes that break things out from the financial statements. Also, in the middle table of the page, it breaks out the principal and interest by years. And, uh, so that, that is, uh, reported further down. And also, a little breakdown on the accretive interest. So I just want you to know that that additional information is there too. The next schedule I'd like to go over is the Budget to Actual Schedule, and that's on PDF 87. And the hard copy on 87 is 83. And this is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance for the General Fund. And the key thing to look at there is what the state looks at is, did you over-expend appropriations? And you can see the district appropriated 168 million and spent 153 million. And you can see that the primary decreases was instruction and plant maintenance. And with the COVID environment, you would expect those to have decreased. The other thing that decreased, well, you can see in state revenue, was primarily due to the, the effect of the ESER grant. So those were the key differences, and so the state really just hones in on the total expenditures. And that's their main concern, is to make sure there's no unfavorable variances in that particular area. The next most important thing is the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost, and that's on PDF page 169. And it's the hard copy 165 in your audit report. And this is the one thing that TEA, as I've mentioned before, they get this, they get this report reported in what they call a data feed, and they also get it in a PDF that's filed on the state website. It's filed on your website as well. And, uh, then they get the data in PIM's data, and they know that we get all of this data, and how can we rely upon the data that's presented? And so the key thing they look at is the type of auditor's report that was issued. And this year, again, was an unmodified, a clean opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you can receive that the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And what does that mean to you? It means that the assets and the liabilities and those revenues and expenditures and all the various groupings and things in those basic financial statements are in agreements with general accepted accounting principle reporting. The other key things are internal control over financial reporting. They want to know if you had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in relation to financial reporting, and those were both no. And there was no noncompliance that was material to the financial statements. In regards to federal awards, because you receive more than $750,000 in federal funds, you're required to have a federal single audit as well as a financial statement audit. And thereto, you also received an unmodified opinion. The federal programs we audited this year was Child Nutrition Cluster, also the COVID-19 Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, ESER. And those were the two programs that were audited. And they too received an unmodified opinion with no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, and no noncompliance. So those are the key things that, uh, TEA looks at, and there were no findings in the prior year audit for follow-up. And so those, those are the, the, uh, key highlights of the audit report. I know that you've had a chance to look at your reports, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I just want to thank Cheryl and all of her staff. I know this year was very unusual, a working environment, trying to come in the field as little as possible because of COVID and, and uploading a lot more information than, even though we upload, or she uploads a lot of information, it was probably even more information this year. And, and also at year-end, and we appreciate all of their professionalism and, uh, their courtesy extended into this audit. And my thanks to the board for letting me present the audit report in, uh, remotely with the COVID. And then last night, my son's wife had twins, so I wanted to be close to home. So I appreciate the opportunity to present remotely, and I look forward to, uh, we were being at your next board meeting live.
Thank you so much.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Does anybody have any question?
I just wanted to question. Yes, uh, so on A1, the net pension liability and other post-employment benefit liability, can you address, are those moving up? Are they staying about the same proportionally? Is there any concern in terms of, uh, overall increase in the liability, I'll say, as opposed to decrease?
Now, and you might be able to see that, uh, liability a little bit better over on Exhibit G3. It's on the hard copy of page 86. So let me see if, uh, probably about 84, yes, he's, he's doing good there. Just one more page to the right, so the next page. Okay, you can see that state, uh, no, that's all right, it's not G2, it's G3, so the next exhibit. And there you can see that, you know, back in '15, it was 14 million, and it grew to 35 million, 37 million, 31 million. 2019 was 50 million, and last year it dropped to 48 million. So it's, um, it has increased and it also has decreased. And, you know, it, sometimes it's going to be truly following, um, sometimes what's happening in the investment world. And the investment world, you don't get immediate relief. Like, you could have a really great year in investments, and what happens is they take that net change and they amortize the ch- the change in all those actuarial calculations. And investments are amortized over a five-year period where all the other net changes are amortized over the remaining life of the participants in that plan. And so it tries to give a smoothing effect. So always, we don't see immediate results, but you can see that it has increased over the years, but from last year, it did decrease.
Okay, thank you.
And then the OPEB is on a couple of more pages over, Exhibit G five. And so there's also the district's proportionate share of that net OPEB liability. And you can see in eighteen was the first year you had to book the OPEB for Gatsby, and that was fifty-seven million, went to sixty-two million, and then it dropped to fifty-eight million. So you can see in both of those plans last year, they were, they did drop.
Okay, thank you.
And OPEB is kind of a, it's one of those that are picking up a huge liability. It's kind of sad that, to me, I think their pension is, I think it's great to have the information about pension and OPEB in the financial statements, but I understand that why Gatsby wanted to move in that direction because there's a lot of entities that, it's not so much in school districts in the state of Texas, but cities in the north and on the west coast, they have a lot of pension plans, they're councils and they're state-approved, and they don't fund them. So there's no transparency in the financial statements of how well-funded they are. And so when you look at that OPEB plan that was on that Exhibit G five, you can see that the funding of that is, at U of M, compared in that position, was only two point six six. And the state tells you that's because it's a pay-as-you-go program. But then when you look at the pension on Exhibit G three, a couple of pages back, you can see that in two thousand and fifteen on that Exhibit G three, at the very bottom, it was eighty-three point two-five percent. They made a lot of changes, making younger people have to work longer and make surcharges the district has to pay, plus the district also has to pay for the new employees for a certain amount of time before they, before the state picks up their portion. And so it's dropped to seventy-five point twenty-four. So you can see it's kind of gone up and down in there. It got back up to eighty-two percent, and then it went back down. So the teacher, the pension plan is, I guess you would say is fairly well-funded, but when you say OPEB, it was not the state's intention to have that a funded plan, kind of like Medicare. Well, you know, today's people are paying for what Medicare costs. There's not this big pot of money there to pay for it. So I don't know if I'm talking too much about it or if I'm explaining it well enough.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I'll move that we approve the 2019-2020 external audit report for the fiscal year ending August 31st, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Thank you, Mr. DePuy. He beat you to it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed? No, hearing none. Passage unanimously. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, we're excited with twins.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, the last item on our agenda is review and discuss long-range facilities planning.
This is an item that we talked about having on the agenda as we work through the planning process for facilities. And so we've had two meetings of our community advisory committee, and I wanted to offer the board an opportunity to discuss those two meetings, provide any input, or just, you know, anything that stood out to you over those. And I know we're just getting started. First meeting was pretty much introductory meeting, and it will start to go a little bit deeper at the next meeting on February the eighth, but this is an item for you all to have discussion about how those two meetings went.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you brought this up, Dr. Buchanan, because, I mean, through two meetings with several ahead of us, and the number of people that are engaged through the community right now, my observation is that, one, of being very impressed with the level of engagement, the format of the meetings, I mean, they have flowed very well, the explanations provided, opportunities to exchange information in the smaller groups, and then present back out to the bigger group. My experience has been that's worked and is working better than methods we have employed in the past to gather up input. So in that regard, I think it's a very robust exchange to gather input. I think it's going to continue, I hope it continues. And we do seem to definitely have a very engaged group of community members, which is certainly what we're targeting for. And just on the basis of those small groups, and we report back the level of comments and the variety of comments, I think we're hitting on all cylinders. So I applaud how you, you know, your preparation, and how you get that, well, the architectural firm as well, how they are prepared, how you're prepared, and how the group is prepared to deal and answer questions, bring it forward. So congratulations, very good, so far.
Thank you.
Two of them.
I think it's very interesting, when we're breaking into small groups and then we go back into the large groups, that there just seems to always be some consensus in the discussions, even though the groups are not coordinated, and it's kind of like a blind discussion, and then we're reporting back, not knowing what the other groups are going to say. But it just seems like, even though we have a very diverse and large committee, people understand kind of what the issues are facing the district and facing facilities. And I think that's been, I've been very heartened by the fact that there just seems to be a lot of consensus in what's needed, which is, I think, have been really a good experience.
Thank you.
I will say one other thing. I've been impressed with the spokespersons from each of the small groups, how they have encapsulated all the comments that have come forward in those smaller groups, and they've captured it and played it back to the larger group as a whole. And I'm very impressed with that level of communication, plus people stepping forward in those groups with a limited amount of time and hitting on topics that are important for us to look at.
Right. Did any particular topic stand out to you all that came from the groups?
Well, technology.
Technology stood out, for sure.
Yeah.
There was a lot of emphasis on equity in our group, both times, which I think was, you know, just a good, fantastic point about the fact that we need to make sure that whatever we do is applied across the board to all of our schools, neighborhood, magnet, et cetera.
Yeah.
I think a theme, I want to agree with what Ms. Houston and Mr. Sykes have said, that, you know, I saw some of the similar things. I think one thing, the sense that I got from my group, from my small group, was the eagerness to really see kind of this fresh wave, I guess, for our district. I think that, you know, the community members or parents in there, I think there was just this sense of, let's do whatever it takes so that our community can be proud, our kids can be proud, that, you know, really wanting, just this overall sense of the absolute best for our students. And, you know, I think one of the people in my group even said, whatever it takes to make, you know, make these buildings just incredible and welcoming. Yeah, I just got a sense that people are ready, people are excited for the possibilities in Waco ISD. Not specifically set, but that was the overall sense that I got.
Thank you, I heard that as well, definitely.
So, I agree, I mean, the word equity came up an awful lot already, so I'm not sure I've got a good word definition for it. And I think we're all talking about the same thing. I wonder, to me, there's nothing approaching, you know, we've just got a real disparity in both the age and quality of our facilities in existence right now, and we're not going to have enough money to bring everything into the 21st century. You know, I think that, and I'm, you know, it's not any one particular part of town, there's new school buildings all over the place, and it's, but I just, I sort of, I guess I'm concerned about ultimately creating some potentially profound disappointment in the end result. And I hate to, I think, overall, the discussions have certainly been positive, but we haven't talked about price tag yet. I would just.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, you know, having been a part of these kinds of committees in the past, I think the visioning is important, and the dreaming about the future of the school district is important. And then we will work through what things cost, and I think we're going to begin to talk about what do new facilities cost at our next meeting. And so then, you know, we'll have to prioritize those, and I think you're absolutely right. We aren't going to be able to do everything all at once, and we're not going to become equitable in terms of facilities in one bond program or in one swoop. It's just not going to happen. So I think, but the idea is to think about that and to start to begin to work towards it. And, you know, we talked about this being a ten-to-fifteen-year plan when we begin the process. It could be a twenty-year plan. It may take us longer to get there. But the idea is we start to see the vision, and then we start moving in that direction over time. And we will have to make some decisions based on our financial situation, and we'll have some conversations about that along the way as well. And that's the hard part, because there are many needs. Yeah, and I think you're, I want to add too, I think your question about the definition of equity may be different, may mean something different to everyone.
Yeah, that one gets thrown out a lot these days, and I.
Sure. And I think for me, and, yeah, it's a good point. I think for me, in terms of facilities, it does come down to the same kinds of facilities from one campus to another. So if you're, you know, if you're, Waco High School and University High School, obviously, are not the two, are not equitable. And you see that in some of our elementary schools in terms of sizes of gyms, or sizes of cafeterias. And so I think in terms of facilities, that's what we're talking about in terms of equity, being able to offer the same programs at campuses in the same grade level span. But someone else might have a different definition, and might have something else in mind.
Well, one thing that our small group, both meetings, mentioned equity in the larger, more global sense of how our district's facilities are not, are disadvantaged to all of our kids across the district when you compare them to our peers, whether it's in fine arts or athletics, that we may be doing all we can, but we're confined by just the limitations we have. And when our kids, you know, we've talked a lot about, parents would mention in our groups about how they take their kids and sporting events to other districts and think, oh my gosh, how inferior our facilities are, so.
I'm not talking about our scoreboard.
Not our scoreboard. No, no, I meant to. I just, I love the breakout, and I love the, it's fun to see who's going to be in your group. And then the opportunity to talk to people, especially, I guess now with COVID, you know, we don't get to see anybody. But just putting together people who all have a common interest and love for the district and the community together from all different perspectives, that's been really fun. But I have been struck by what Stephanie said, is the eagerness. I, everybody so far in my groups, both nights, have just been really excited and so pleased that we're here and we're having the conversation, and there's been a lot of proactive engagement. A lot of people writing in the chat and sharing, you know, in small groups, even though, you know, I don't personally know a lot of the people in the group, everybody seems really comfortable. So I also feel some, a bit of tension with people who's like, want to get on with it. And, you know, people are asking me more questions that I know you're going to get to down the road. And so, you know, when it comes to debt capacity and our tax rate and the cost of facilities, and what kind of facilities, and designing them, we're going to get there. It's just a process, and I'm just, I think we've got a great group. We knew that from the very beginning, but I think as we get, like you say, next month, we'll maybe answer some more questions for people, but people seem like they're really ready, but.
That's great. Well, I think we're off to a great start, and we will definitely be going deeper with all of those issues you're talking about. Was there any other board member who wanted to add anything?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, this will be on our agenda to discuss as we go through, and so there'll be plenty of opportunity for board members to share their thoughts, and if they have any questions or things that they want the committee to address, of course, you can always forward those to Dr. Buchanan. Okay, announcements, Mr. DePuy.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would end with a note on the discussion that you just had, which is the next meeting of our community advisory committee is set for February 8th. And to everyone who's not a part of that committee but wants to follow along with the discussion, you can watch those meetings live at wacoisd.org/cacmeeting. And you can also find recordings of the meetings, including all of the different small group conversations posted a couple of days later on our YouTube page as well. A couple other things we'd like to highlight this evening, starting today, University High School has opened their tax preparation program, which is a great community service that allows members of the community to get assistance with their taxes for free. It looks a little different this year in that it's a curbside program, and so you can go into the student lot at university if you're looking to take advantage of that. But that's available from 4:45 to 8:00 p.m. Tuesdays and Thursdays now until April 15th, with the exception of the week of spring break. And then two milestones that are happening next Friday, a week from tomorrow on February 5th. First, that's our first remote instruction day, where all of our students across the district will be learning remotely. And secondly, that's also the last day for families and members of the community and employees to share their feedback on possible calendars for the next academic year. And if you want to see those three options of calendars, share your preferences, share your feedback, you can find a link to do that on our homepage at wacoisd.org. Thank you so much.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned. Good night.